There you go, council, nice to see everyone this evening. And I'll call the meeting order right at 6:00 PM. Just before we start, I'd like to acknowledge the bonuses to both council officials. And I've said my piece to you both privately, and you know what to do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And Deputy Mayor, Mr. Maker, go ahead.
The council, the corporation, the township of Horned Pain would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging the land on which we gather here today. This Treaty 9, 1905, 1906 territory. The traditional lands of indigenous peoples, as we work towards reconciliation, may we all live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples.
Thank you. Hey, review and note to any changes to the agenda, there are none tonight. If I can get a mover and a second please, and by council, Peter Kissmaker. It resolved that council was hereby approve the agendas, those in favor, and that is carried. Declaration of community interests, declaration of conflict of interest, council will do that at any time if such a situation arises through the meeting. I have no paperwork right now. So we have a couple of presentations tonight. The first one is Community Living Algonha. Are they online already? Okay, great. Okay, so I'd like to invite Hannah Hopkins. Hi Hannah, can you hear us okay?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, great. The floor is yours.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, city councillors and fellow community members. We are proud to stand before you as a proclamation to announce Community Living Awareness Month is read. I'm Hannah and I'm here on behalf of Community Living Algonha. I'm a member of the council of Community Living Algonha. We are a group of individuals who speak out for change, advocating for others and ourselves within CLA. And the community of Algonha. Community Living Algonha is a nonprofit charitable organization committed to the full inclusion citizenship of people with intellectual disabilities. Now, in its 70th year of operation, it provides services and supports to over 540 children and adults in District of Algonha. Community Living Awareness Month is also being recognized by Blind River, Horned Pain, Wawa and Elliott Lake. We're honored to share this recognition with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, and I do want to extend our thank you for having Community Living Algonha in our community. Because it does help Horned Pain try to be more inclusive. We have many challenges that we have to overcome, still moving in the future, but I think with Community Living Algonha's help, we can achieve that. So thank you so much for presenting tonight. And I'm gonna read our resolution. If I can get a mover and a second please. Move by Councilor Peter Kissmaker, second by Councilor Ted Gentman. Whereas Community Living Algonha has provided supports and services to people with intellectual disabilities in their families in the municipality of Horned Pain and surrounding districts since 1954. And provide services to 402 adults and 138 children across the District of Algonha. And whereas Community Living Algonha's goal is that people with intellectual disabilities have every opportunity to participate fully in our community with dignity, independence and acceptance. And whereas Community Living Algonha works with Horned Pain volunteers and other stakeholder groups and organizations to promote citizenship for people with intellectual disabilities. So that they have the rights and responsibilities and the opportunities that come with belonging, participating and contributing as a valued member in society. And whereas Community Living Algonha Awareness Month is a province-wide initiative created to celebrate the values of community living, which are inclusion, equality and respect. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horned Pain does hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Community Living Awareness Month in the community of Horned Pain. And I put that to a vote, council, those in favor. Thank you, that is carried. Thank you so much for this evening. Do you have any other words?
Thank you. No.
Okay, great, you have a great evening, thank you for being in Horned Pain virtually.
Thank you.
Bye. It's courage.
No. I love it.
Okay, and we have a second presentation tonight is Cinnamon Toast New Media Incorporated. And it's a brand project, and we're welcoming Andrea Dyer and Myra Bird. Sorry, I'm trying to read my paper and look at the screen, and I only have one set of eyes. Welcome to Horned Pain virtually again, it's nice to see you both.
Thank you so much, we're really excited to be back in your council meeting and please to put bow on this project with this presentation, which is essentially just a summary of the events and deliverables that we have done so far. So, are we okay to proceed?
Fantastic, the floor is yours and all of councils here, and we're all excited to see it as well.
Awesome, love to see, hear that. I'm just gonna get you to skip to the next slide, I think. So just as a bit of an overview and to begin, and as we hope has been successfully communicated. Your lovely township procured our agency, Cinnamon Toast, to effectively design and deliver an updated brand identity. To really sort of better reflect your personality, your community values, as well as develop a destination marketing strategy to sort of help attract tourists and visitors and really appeal to, or sorry appease your economic development goals or some of them. Next slide. Me, forgive me, I have a bit of an itch in my throat today, so. So to set us up for success with this project and knowing that your community members of course know Horned Pain best. We started this project by executing a series of stakeholder engagement activities where we were really intent on collecting both qualitative and quantitative data so that we had sort of this 360-degree approach and insights to pull from. So we completed a digital survey, a series of one-on-one interviews and of course some focus group discussions. So, not surprisingly, we heard a lot of really great sentiments from the community, which was detailed in our report of findings. But some of the key things that we heard and felt really inspired by was this connection to the outdoors. The really sort of warm-hearted sense of community and togetherness and unity that the township radiates. As well as this resounding sense of hope and optimism for the future, which was really exciting for us to hear because we don't often hear that in these sorts of projects. Some of the more interesting highlights that came from our digital survey was that despite there not necessarily being a clear origin story or understanding of the three bears in the community. People did actually feel really attached to the home of the three bears tagline and the motif of them in the community. So that was really standout to us, and then also the concept of being the geographical center of Ontario also emerged as important. And that attachment to, of course, the scenery and the outdoors and the beauty came up as significant as well. Which leads us to the brand development process. So calling on the insights that we collected throughout our engagement process. We really put our heads down and got to the work, or got to work on your brand framework. I'm gonna get you go to the next slide, Myra. Thank you so much. Which is just a series of statements effectively that sort of define the essence of your community and provide this really nice tidy platform for storytelling and all of your marketing efforts moving forward ideally. So then we got to work on the visual system. So as you may recall, we did bring forth multiple logo concepts, each of which had sort of a different take or interpretation of what we heard during our engagement sessions. Next slide, Myra. So after, you know, presenting those concepts, we did put our head down to make some refinements, albeit very minor ones, which was also very pleasant, to sort of push forward a final concept. And then we also devised a series of brand, or sorry, a brand guidelines document to govern the usage of the brand and make sure that there was clear parameters around how the brand should be used to create that consistency. And then we also developed an implementation plan to help guide the rollout of the brand so that we don't just hand you this pretty package and say, okay, go forth. We want to make sure that you have an understanding of a way to roll it out in a comprehensive way. And then lastly, sorry, Myra, can you just go up again? And then lastly, just a view, a review of where we landed with the final concept in terms of, oh, actually, sorry, Myra, next slide. I got lost for a second. So yes, in terms of where we landed with the final concept, so in addition to that really beautiful sort of earthy depiction of a mama bear and her two cubs. As a tribute to the beautiful outdoors and that positive outlook that we heard during our engagement sessions and that overarching spirit of Horned Pain. We also created a tagline to celebrate your position as the geographic center of Ontario and to really sort of tempt people into the community. So we came up with adventure begins at the center, again, looking for that to be something that underpins your marketing messages and hopefully brings people in or at least calls attention to Horned Pain. And then, yeah, again, that bear motif appears in the logo, I'm sure, I mean, hopefully ideally you've all seen it by now. And yeah, so we're really excited about where we landed. And I think that more or less concludes our presentation and our project. We want to take a moment to sincerely thank you all for investing your trust in us to deliver this brand and for providing us with some insights to help sort of guide the way. We were really delighted to work with our project team and to feel like we had genuine and unwavering support throughout this project was invaluable to us. So thank you so much, and I'm open for questions if there are any.
For questions, oh, sorry. I guess you couldn't hear me. Thank you for your presentation and I'll open up the floor for questions. Councilor Stephanico?
Yeah, Deputy Mayor, thank you very much, a very solid report, a good growth map, a good blueprint, whatever terminology you want to use. What I found interesting in your executive summary, second page. Only 33% of participants believe Horned Pain's history and heritage are significantly valued. That really struck me odd, actually. Been here 40 years, always associated with Horned Pain or people that are speaking outside larger centers, they associate railway and lumbering. So it was really interesting to receive that, I respect that of course, but it was interesting to see such a low value of 33%. Any comments on that?
I mean, I personally was a little bit surprised as well, just because we knew about the railway heritage specifically. So I think, in a way, at first we were a little bit excited because of course we were like, well, that's a clear sort of motif we can include in our logo. And we were really surprised, I think, when we realized that not a lot of people brought it up or discussed it at length or presented it as something that was really significant to them. So I think that your surprise was equally shared.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I just want to say I'm really excited, I love the branding guidelines. I really wanted to find the picture of the six, I think it's six photos, and then just the outline of the gem is used on it. And I just thought that it just tied in, like I could see this like on a tourism website, like I could see it coming to life. I really liked that part, and I love the color layout. And how did that come about, like how was that just discussed or was it felt by what you'd heard from the community?
Yeah, I mean, I wish Sarah was here because she is our lovely designer who crafted this one. I think we always look for, I mean, when we heard that there was such an attachment to the scenery and sort of the natural aspects of Horned Pain. For us, that really ruled out a lot of color palettes, you know, of course, we're not going to introduce like neons and things like that because we didn't feel like that would be representative of your community. So I know that certainly when Sarah was thinking on palettes, we can get very fun and funky and crazy with our palettes, but I think for you guys, she was really like, you know, this is a place that really prides its natural assets and its scenery, so let's do something that's authentic to that. So I think that's why she landed where she did.
Okay, yeah, no, I love it, and I just already I'm thinking about like our delegation packages where we go to the province, and it's like, I just think it's gonna be it'll come off very vibrant, even though the color palette is more of a muted type of tone. The only question I had was, and I may have missed it, is was there any discussion on a new sign? Or any kind of suggestion on a new town sign, and if it's in the documents, can you shoot me the page?
Yeah, Myra, you might be able to answer this a little, answer this a little bit better than I am, but I do know we definitely discussed signage when it came to the implementation plan. So I do believe there are some inclusions in there. Do you have anything to add to that, Myra?
Yeah, absolutely, I can jump in there. So we're actually very fortunate to continue working with your project team. As part of the implementation plan, we did look at signage and wave finding as one of the elements that we would want to address. And we are actually in the process of developing some designs for the new highway sign, a welcome sign, as well as other potential wave finding elements. So yes, that's definitely in the works as we helped roll out the full brand.
Okay, okay, and just with the, I guess this may be a question first, does there been any discussion on the location of those signs or coming into town? Are we looking at just a billboard?
I'm gonna relay that question to the Economic Development Office.
Okay.
So we're looking at just the design right now, so where they're gonna go, but we have a lot of spaces, just all free and open for our account, but I don't think, no matter what the design is, it's not community-ish. We're gonna do the highway signs exactly the same size, so we don't have to go through the process with them to CEO again, but we, we're just starting the wave finding signs, we don't have any designs yet, we're still figuring that out.
Okay, okay, it's just, I just want to put that out there that when we had discussions way back when this was just in the infancy. There's two natural rock cuts that come into our community. Instead of putting the signage where the signage was, that's where I, if you're wondering where my mind was going with that question. It's just trying to again highlight that natural beauty and really making the sign stand out. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a regular-sized billboard, like when you're looking at town community signs, like I'm thinking of Berry, they have the waves and then they got Berry, so. So I give you some license, and I think council's in agreement. We've had those discussions, mine's years now, I think, years ago. But, any further questions? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh no, I was just saying, thank you very much, we really appreciate it, we love this brand so much too, so we're really excited to see it continue to roll out.
Okay, any further questions from council? Okay, I don't see any further questions from council, so great job, and I'm just going to receive your report for information, and I'm glad to hear you're gonna continue on working with our team here at Horned Pain. And look forward to seeing what's coming in the future.
Awesome, thank you Mayor Fort and Council, we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, have a fantastic night.
You too, bye.
Bye.
Okay, if I can get a mover and a second please. Move by Councilor Ted Gentman, second by Councilor Bill Kissmaker. It resolved that council was hereby received the final branding project report and presentation, brand guide and destination marketing plan for the township of Horned Pain and Cinnamon Toast New Media Incorporated as information. Those in favor, and that is carried. Just a question on that, do we end up passing that we want the brand implemented, does that come later? As I think both of them we've only passed as information, have we?
If you want to speak.
Did we the first time?
We just made it the first one.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
If we haven't, we'll just bring it back.
I honestly, I can't recall, so, but I can double check as well.
Okay, great. Okay, now we're on 7.1, we're talking about the long-term loans in the municipal funding. Did Melissa want to speak to this first, before we start?
Yes. So I do have some additional information that came out from the agenda review yesterday between Mayor Fort and CEO. So there was a question that arrived in regards to our OSIF funding. So Mayor Fort had asked if our OSIF funding can be used for paying loan payments and interest. So I reached out to our advisor, who advised the eligibility criteria is for water, wastewater, roads, bridges and culverts. And those projects must be part of our asset management plan in order to be eligible for the project. And loan payments and interest are in fact an eligible expense, however, the project must be approved by the ministry and it cannot be applied to projects, that's before January 1st, 2017. There was another question about our 2025 allocation, so I was not able to get any information on that. But information doesn't come until November or December of this year. However, our OSIF allocation for this year was just shy of $400,000. There was also a question in regards to our current loans, our water and water treatment plant loan is currently at $868,380 remaining for principal payments. That's the loan that's due in 2042. The rolling stock loan, the radiator and the two pickup trucks, is currently at $88,960, that's the loan that's coming out, or finished in 2026. And the loan that's coming due will be 2028. For the wastewater treatment plant in the Sander, the principal balance remaining is $97,750. Mayor Fort also asked for information for a breakdown between the implications on taxes and water, and I haven't been able to get to providing that information quite yet. And I had sent an email to Infostructure Ontario quite some time ago, almost, I don't know, it's been over two weeks now. Requesting further information in regards to the long-term loan process and bundling capital projects and whatnot, and I followed up three times and I still haven't received a response.
Thank you for that, Melissa, and in that email too, that was, we're waiting for the definition of substantial completion, that was part of that as well. And just with the allocations, just for clarification, when I asked that, I was asking if the allocation for 2025 had been allocated to any project yet? And it hadn't been, so that's not as well.
So we had quite the discussion, council, I went through the different documents that were provided to us, and then actually found, we, through our discussion, found a few other documents that we had looked at. So the first thing that I had looked at was approaching it as although it's a big guideline in the report to show the percentages, some of the items cannot be utilized over 30 years. So we have to figure out what's a 10, what's the 10-year, the 20-year, the third year. You haven't had time to do that yet. So that needs to be figured out because because there's two different, when we're looking at this, we have our water and wastewater capital, and that's the dechlorinization project, and then what that's going to do for us. So that definitely can be a 30-year, we looked it up, most, all the water can be 30. There was one, one thing that could be 20 years, but it wasn't included, I think, during our initial discussion, like the treasurer looking into it further, I'm sure, but and then looking at, that's why I'd asked about what the loan amounts are now and what's allocated where. And then when we look at our, what we want to do for the arena project. When we were in discussion, I was told that the whole amount would have to be borrowed for. And then we would, we still have to find out if we can roll that into a different, what type of loan and what would be owing on that, sorry, not the arena project, the road project. And so there's still information outstanding on that, we have to wait for OSIF to get back to the treasurer. But tonight, we were so, do we, through the COA, to the treasurer, are we still waiting for these amounts, we know if it's a 10-year or 20-year for the loans, do we have to wait for that?
What, perhaps you can just guide us on what page of the?
I'm on page five.
Of the municipal funding report?
No, on the long-term loan.
And sorry, Mayor Fort, can you move it here?
Because we had talked about that some, like there would be a loan at a 10-year loan, there'd be a loan at a 20-year loan, there'd be a loan at a 30-year loan. And like, because we're looking for direction on how we're going to do this. But we had to divide out which ones would be in which loan.
So, I'm not I think based on our, the life cycles of each. We would punk it in each one if that's the way that council wants to go through different loans at 10, 20 and 30. Is that council's direction?
No, we're having a discussion, we can't, we can't get a loan for something that doesn't have a life cycle longer than like the life cycle makes the maximum loan.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so it's understanding what we have to have for 10 years, somewhere to have no choice, right?
Yep.
So that's where that's not clear, which ones are, like when we're looking at the last page of the report where the examples are of the annual payments and the cost of borrowing. On page 10. Like we can't like the public works capital items, we can't even borrow those for 30 years. So that's, that's what I'm trying to get clarification on, is what we can have for a 10-year loan, what we can have for a 20 so that we can make a better understanding. I don't know if there's any other way that we can do it. I leave that to the treasurer? Am I missing something here?
No, no, I'm, I'm in agreement, but I, I understand that there is, that they're gonna be structured like that, either 10, 15, 20, 25, whatever it is that amortization schedule allows for. But I don't understand why that would hinder moving forward, that those will be details that will be worked out through the process.
Okay, so tonight then, how much money are you asking us to say we want to borrow for?
Well, all of these items have been approved in the 2024 budget, so all of the items are in the 2024 budget.
Right, but we approved them in the 2024 budget, waiting for more information on how we were gonna pay for them.
Okay, Melissa.
So basically, basically is what you're asking is we eliminate the 10, 20, 30, we just punk them in right now, and just makes it easier on us, is that what your thinks saying, Madam Mayor?
Well, yeah, well, I'm just not sure, like are all the fire department capital items 10 years, or all the public works capital 10 years? Because then we can see, like if we group all of the 10 years together, we can see. And then because we can't
Your amortization schedule cannot Your amortization schedule cannot exceed the expected life of the individual project.
Right. But some of them, we're gonna, we have, our hands are tied. If we're gonna get a loan for them, they've gotta be in 10-years.
Right.
And then the other part is understanding that between the 20 and the 30-years is, I guess, the initial loan with Infrastructure Ontario, we're not sure if we can roll that into a 30-year loan. We have to wait for that. Right? That's part of the email. Go ahead, sorry?
That's okay, just, uh, charge the S. Oh, sorry.
So just clarification, so, um, is it council's direction that you want to maximize all of the long-term loans for the life cycle of each asset? Or like, we're not gonna get a loan for 10-years that has a life cycle of 30-years? Like, it's going to, is each one gonna fit into that category? Or we're getting shortened loans? Like, that's what I'm wondering. Like, are we gonna do the arena project for 30-years if that's what the amortization schedule is? Or we're gonna do it for 10-years? Is there the questions that I need to know from council before I can even get a response from Infrastructure Ontario?
Go ahead, dear.
I think we can just go over one by one, right, right away, because I think it's pretty straightforward, eh?
Yeah.
I mean, like, the baseball field obviously will go short-term. The arena would be like buying a home, you wanna kind of keep it within reason that we can afford to repay it. The Third, the Third Avenue, obviously, that would be, Public Works Manager could straighten this out on that one. But I think it would be safest, would it be 20-years be safer or would you go more towards 10? With the sewer? Yes, to me, pavements 15 to 20-years.
We had a discussion during our meeting that we assign the asset life to it, right? For the, for the pavement? So we can assign that a 30-years?
Yeah, it's, we go according to our tangible capital asset.
Okay.
So all of these assets that council wants to get, would want to get long-term loans, where those are, um, already have a timeline established through our, our own policy.
Once we sign life expectancy and amortization, this is still a living document, can we change as we go? Like, so say something else comes up, different funding? Or maybe something happens that we might have to defer going ahead with the project? Like, after we say, what we've got to say, is it set in stone or is it still, we can move and do we have room for, is there any room for movement if need be?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that we can get a construction loan. I was telling Mayor Ford yesterday that we, we have to put out all of the money upfront for all of these things because they're, they're clean-based programs. So we have to put up the money for the Third Avenue project and for the arena project, the money upfront. And then we'll pay it back when we get our ISIF money.
So we get that, we get that money when we're at a certain level in the project, or a certain, like, certain amount done completion or whatever?
No, I submit a claim, a claim to the government and we have to submit all the receipts and everything and then they give us the money back.
Okay.
So we have to put up the whole amount for the whole project upfront. So my question to Infrastructure Ontario is, can we get this construction loan for the arena project as well as the Third Avenue project? And then once our ISIF money comes in, if we can pay all of that off through them and then roll the rest of it into a long-term loan?
Gotcha. Thank you.
And so if we did the arena, the ball field, and Third Ave, that would all be eligible for 30-years?
I would have to look at the asset, the capital asset, if we can get the answer right. Okay.
Well, we can keep them individual, especially I think in the ball field, because I think that's, I really believe with the potential of Phil coming from the hive and a few other things. And obviously, we've got people in the community really stepping up and raising money, quite a bit of money. We can pay it within a very short period of time. We can keep it separate, so we're not locked into, like, there's no penalty for paying it early, right?
We don't know that.
It's open, you don't know if you're open-ended or not, eh?
The construction loan is open-ended.
Gotcha.
While you have the construction ongoing, you have to make your monthly payments of the interest only. And then when it gets rolled into a diventure, then you pay your two payments per year for whatever amount of years it's for.
Okay.
So the amount, the four, six, 4.63% in here, is that the construction loan amount? Or is that Ontario, Infrastructure Ontario loan amount?
That's their loan amount.
Okay, so is the construction portion higher or?
I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, dear mayor, I did look at this for you to analyze it last week, actually. And I think one of this was a major decision for this council, any council, I think, the last 40-years, because I lived here and I was part of it. So it has to be very careful thought out. This is my take, only my take, for looking at the, the arena project after doing some numbers and playing with stuff. I would go for 10-years. Third Avenue project, go for 30-years. Baseball field, of course, 10-years. Declaration system, 30-years. Those I was pretty solid with the information that I have. I didn't get into specifics for fire department or as, as the council Peter said, input from the public works manager and the fire department. But the other ones, I'm pretty solid on my decision and the way I wanna proceed, I personally.
Okay, did you add up the loan amounts that you had to see what it would be annually?
I have, I have all of that at home, I didn't bring it, I'm just, I just circled my main page that I received. People, that's why I work, that's the one I worked on.
Can I, uh, I would, I'd just like to have a review on what's in front of me, just so I, I'm hoping I understand this. But, okay, um, we're looking at everything individually, am I correct? And then, once we've done that and once we've figured out what kind of loan we have to go for in order to put, get the money upfront, are we able to take everything that we have to consolidate into maybe one type of loan? So we're not stretched and we know what our payments are going to be? Steady? Am I getting this, am I looking at this wrong or is that, can we do that?
We would be able to do it with, for the assets that have the same life cycles. But we wouldn't, we would have to get separate loans for items that don't fit like 30-years.
Okay. Because that's what I, I, I believe, I think we're gonna find hard pain is when we have these individual things and not consolidating them, that's my worry. I don't, go ahead, Melissa.
And one thing we've got to consider is I'm looking at, I'm probably the average agent, maybe on the older side, but in 30-years, I don't know if I'm still gonna be alive. And if you look at the difference in the amortization rate between 20 and 30-years, and thank you, uh, Melissa for laying it out very clear.
There is.
When you go from a 10-year, so we've got to consider, we always want to go for the, you want to leave as much room as you can in your budget for unexpected items, I understand that. But to go from a 10-year to 20-year amortization, you're pretty well cutting your, uh, cutting the payments in half and increasing the overall interest by about 30%, 20%. When you go from the 20-year to 30-year, you're only reducing it a further, it's, it's negligible. The repayment, yet the interest goes through the roof. And I'm just thinking of our, my children and my grandchildren when they come along, I don't want them paying for something that's, I mean, if we got to, we have to, I understand. But I, we really should be looking at the difference in 20 and 30-years. I, I don't think it's, overall, it's not worth it because, unless we absolutely have to. Because the interest almost doubles and the payment only goes down by maybe 20%. The annual repayment, if you look at the difference in a lot of these loans, especially the larger numbers. Unless I, but please, anybody come in with a different look on it and I'd love to hear it. I just, I just don't love that, I don't like that idea. And I know that's a modern way of doing business now is deferring payment for our children and our grandchildren. But I don't think we should follow the example that's been put down by our provincial.
Does the treasurer have a recommendation? No recommendation? Okay, um, I do have to add some comments. When we were in discussions yesterday, there was, um, we had found a resolution from about the ball field. And you might remember this, that we were looking at getting ball field money from NHFC and then staff net. And they actually told us not to go for ball field money, to actually go for money for the arena. And it could cut our payment down by, to $500,000 for what we would owe if we get in NHFC. It's the community enhancement. And that is on, so I think, I don't, I think we need to have a more solid plan on how we're gonna do this. And we have to get information from Infrastructure Ontario. I think currently, though, there is the stuff for the fire department and public works. Um, I would, I would like to go to, not that I want to keep us in 30-years of debt. I would like to try and make some sort of fundraising plan for arena where it's completely paid in 2028. But I need to know if we can pay that loan off or part, part of that loan. And then go with the longer, like, wrap everything in, that can be 30-years into 30-years. Because my concern is if you look at the payments, we, like, we can't increase taxes by 22.2%. Like, that's going at 10-years, like, yes, it pays it off quicker, but people will be flooding out of our community, like, even the 30-years at 11.2. And just some, just some comments, if you go to page nine of the report, just to get some clarification, is that, uh, sorry, the first number, the 30, 3.8 million, is all of the projects listed on page 10, except the second option of Third Avenue? And then the second number, 5.6, that's all of the options. Did I get that correct, Melissa? And the other amount that's not in here that we had a discussion on was $457,000 for option three of Third Ave?
Okay, is that where it was?
Okay, I'm going by memory, that's what I wrote down, but I think that's what it was. Can we get clarification on that? At the, um, ministry level, is there financial advisors that give support? That can help us map the cell better for longevity?
I'm not sure, I'd have to look into that.
Okay, have we ever looked at that for help? No?
To answer your question about for option three, it's $487,000.
$487,000, sorry, another $30,000 or not.
I was wondering where those numbers came from, thank you.
So as of right now, we don't know how much would be the total amount of what the 10-year loan would be? Or a 20-year of what the in loans?
No, defer that to the treasurer.
No, I don't know.
Okay. Is, um, what is going to get stalled if we don't decide tonight?
I believe it's the items that are at the top of page six, so those four items. And Melissa's long-term loan, loan report, and Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong. Four bullets there.
So it would be all the fire department stuff, all the public work stuff, um, the ball field, the arena, and the Third Avenue project?
Okay, so, um, until we decide what instrument we're gonna use to fund the Third Avenue project, it can't continue at all with the engineers?
Well, we, we don't have direction from council which option we're going to, so we can't move forward.
What do you mean, which option?
Option one to a free.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not talking about Third Ave, I'm talking about, uh, did I say Third Ave?
Yes.
And then the arena.
We need to put out 26% of our portion each bill that we pay. So we can't move forward because we don't know how we're paying for our portion. We don't have any funding set aside for the arena project, for the municipal portion of 26%.
Okay, but when's that 26% due?
We have to pay it throughout, we have to put the money upfront first and then ask for money back.
Right, but when are we gonna be paying our first payment?
We don't know yet, we haven't moved forward with the project.
Yeah, we haven't given direction on how we're gonna fund it.
Yeah, I know, but we already paid our engineers, did we not? They're paid in full?
No.
No, okay. So we haven't paid anything on that project?
We have paid up until last September?
Yeah, September, October, I think we.
Okay, so I guess at our next meeting, we need to know what we can get for 30-years? What can be stretched out for 30, what can be stretched out for 20, and what can be stretched out for 10? And if we can find out from OSIF those questions and is there, uh, we're gonna be talking about the ball field on the first endway. Can we make that decision, that's, it's not going anywhere? And, um, the Third Ave project, is there any other information that council's gonna need? Go ahead.
The Third Ave project, like, I'm, I don't know about everybody else, but that, I'm willing to move ahead on that. At least decide on which option to take, I can vote for that right now if you want to go for that.
Yeah. What option would council like to take, one, two, or three for the Third Ave project?
I, I would personally take the debt-free one, option one.
Debt-free, okay.
Because we are gaining a meter and a half on each side. We're gonna have much more than we originally had, and we're gonna be brand-new and we won't have to, it'll all be paid for.
Okay, are we gaining a meter and a half on each side?
I thought that was debt, uh, option three.
No, that's option one, ain't going.
Go ahead, Wayne.
A meter and a half of paved area, shoulder, paved right now, you know, that shoulder and pavement.
Oh, okay, so it's actually better than what it is right now?
Absolutely.
That's option three.
Option three.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was option one.
Yeah, it's option three.
Option number one was just the pavement, like it is right now. Option two is with the sidewalks and option three is with the wide road.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Option one has a meter on each side.
Okay, let's get clarification on this. So option, more pavement than what's there right now? Go ahead.
Right now, the road surface is paved, the shoulders are not paved. You're gonna gain the paved shoulder, so it's a meter.
Okay.
But, do the option three is a meter and a half, was it? A meter and a half, I'm pretty sure each side of the road is gonna gain an extra meter over on both sides.
Okay, the more of it was gonna be on the south side, though. Yeah. Because it would be more like a walking path on the one side. Cause it would be more like a walking path on the one side. Okay, I did not realize that, I thought we were getting exactly what was there. Thank you for that, Wayne, go ahead.
Yeah, may I tell you, I was very clear on my decision when that was brought up by engineers. I thought item number three was the way to go, if you remember my comment, let's do it right the first time, that's exactly what I quote unquote. So I, I thought we had a general consensus, I'm not saying we voted on, but I thought general consensus was item number three. As presented, because they presented it after the meeting, that original meeting, so I think that decision was made.
Okay, and we do have time on that one.
Yeah, just to get something off the charger or something.
Do we want to just send them a quick email and get that clarification for the first? I'm, I'm in favor with Drago, I think the time is now, if we're looking at, you know, fifteen year, and I'm not exactly sure how this policy works and stretches it to thirty years, but I, like in fifteen years, it won't happen, I just don't think so, like if they want to expand the road and
What was the price difference between three and one?
Four eighty seven.
Yeah.
But if there's a significant difference and there's shoulder on both sides and it's paved out.
So I have the original, the option one and two open here right now, and it says one meter paved shoulder for option one. And option two is a one point five meter wide concrete sideways and it had the one meter paved shoulder as well.
Okay, I guess what I'm looking for is I just want clarification on what that actually looks like out there right now. Does it say how much pavement's on there right now and how much they're adding?
For each option?
For the number one option. I don't have that in front of me.
I can show you.
So is seven meters of pavement on the road right now? Does it, in the presentation, did it say, did it show us what was existing in the picture?
I don't believe so, I think that was just option one and two.
Could change your mind. Melissa, go ahead.
Just for clarification, I'm not sure if the actual increase from option one to three is four hundred eighty seven thousand, but four hundred eighty seven thousand is how much we need to get our long term loan for. It's not necessarily the increase from.
If we were to go with auction, if council was to go with auction three.
That's correct.
Okay, why is it the loan? Why is the, it's not necessarily the increase for this, what we have to get the loan for?
Those are the expenses that aren't eligible for the grant, that we have to cover a hundred percent on our own.
Okay, and are we allowed to use any of our ice?
That's in addition to the OSIF funding, that's the remaining balance.
Yeah, but we don't have anything allocated for our OSIF funding for twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six, correct? And can we use any of that for those expenses that you're saying? We could.
If it runs into twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, so there is options there. Go ahead, Dr.
Yeah, I'm understanding what the nearest spoken had great interest. We're going to get for item option three, we're going to get the exact width of the road that is current and one point five meters added to that for walkway sidewalk, whatever you want to call it. Cause concrete sidewalk didn't make sense to anyone. And we thought for, for the maintenance solve, it's better to have entire road a pavement and that's how it was. A meter and a half of the side, that was my understanding, clear understanding.
Okay. You know what, let's invite them to May first and we can have some questions, we'll make the decision, we have these other ones that need to decide. He said, he gave us the time to do it. We're not stalling the project until June for that one. And then we can look into, we need the information for the NOHFC if we can actually apply to see if we can get that five hundred thousand to go for the arena project. And that was back in August, I think. Regardless of how we go after the funding, we still have to get the full loan.
Yeah.
For the construction loan. It was August eighteenth of twenty twenty one. It's in a report on that day. And it's where we canceled the baseball field, you remember that, C S C, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, so we, we also had a meeting in twenty twenty two. In twenty twenty one with Serge, however, he told us that we could get additional funding just to pay our portion. And when we had our second meeting, they said we wouldn't just apply to get our portion, they wouldn't cover just our portion in the HFC. They said if we wanted to, we could put it for other equipment as well. We talked about potentially the ZenBoni or something. But we couldn't just put in a loan to pay municipal portion, we have to make it like a whole grant application to the parameters that are in the new program. Cause twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four is not the same in the HFC.
Okay, so what report was that given to us, did you know?
There's another recording here. December twelfth, twenty twenty two. The programs are, and they could be different again since twenty twenty two, I haven't looked at the NOHFC guidelines for twenty twenty two.
Okay, so, sorry, I missed that, C S C, what did you say?
I haven't looked at the guidelines for NOHFC in twenty twenty four at all, I don't know if there's, it's the same as the guidelines for last year. We could definitely not save the same for twenty twenty one.
Okay, so we're not going to be prepared to do a two million dollar project in six years from now. So I think we should investigate then if we can use some of that money for the ball field then, to go back. Cause we, we strayed away from the ball field because we thought we could get this bigger pot. So if we put a package together for funding to do some, to incorporate some of the expenses we have with that. Um, originally, we're going to go to NOHFC for the ball field. And then they pivoted us and said, don't do that, because that's not, like do this bigger project with your arena project. Now you're saying that that wasn't allowed after, that we changed it. So are there any things in the current project with the arena that we're looking at getting loans for that we could possibly go to NOHFC for?
Absolutely, but it's two million dollars and it's fifty percent, so we would have to find another long term.
No, no, I'm saying the smaller amount, the first amount. Yeah.
It'll still be, I think it's eighty percent for that, but there's probably something that we could do for the arena project.
But we could use, we could go after the two hundred thousand because we're, we're going to get a loan for two twenty anyway, for the ball field.
Yeah, I don't remember if the baseball field was eligible or not.
Okay, go ahead.
So we've got the Trillium funding stint then, and I don't believe you're allowed to stack both Trillium and NOHFC into the whole provincial. That's why they told us to go with that.
The arena.
I said, I think, wait till the, because we couldn't apply because it'd be a right there. Both of them had provincial aspects, baseball has NOHFC, which is provincial, and the ISF had provincial and federal. So neither of them were, or they were ineligible until we got scope change and then we could go to NOHFC because we wouldn't have those things that we de-scooped, we wouldn't have a provincial funding there. That's why we hadn't done anything, because both of them have a provincial grant right now, but the de-scooped items would be eligible, not all of them, but.
Okay.
Pressure.
I don't know, but.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be here for the May first, but I can tell you now that I would certainly look at the, the option number three would be my preference just because of the high volume of traffic on there, to be able to make it a safer road. That would be my option to choose.
Safe travel.
Thank you.
Go ahead, council.
Yeah, you made a comment about fundraising, we discussed fundraising for the last couple of years, I don't see any movement, any fundraising. I mean, it's nice word, what's, can you give me an expansion if you want to fundraise for arena? What's your plan of action, I mean, I like to hear it, so to understand it, to comprehend it, because fundraising right now is difficult, especially. Please.
Well, if you map out, first of all, you can put a budget together and hire a fundraiser, professional fundraiser. You can, other community organizations have more decency on the rules, so when you look at those big fifty fifty draws. So for an example would be all the legions in our area, so you partner with the legions and then the benefit goes to the community from those draws. Uh, we can't do that directly, like someone asked me that, like why can't we do like the fifty fifty draws that hospice was being, municipalities can't do that. Or we can work with a partner who does that and then the money's donated to the municipal project. The other thing is if you divide one point two million by a thousand, it's twenty four hundred. So if twenty four hundred over four years is fifty bucks a month. So you can put that in place and ask the community and say, do we want to open this up at twenty twenty eight debt free? And hold a facility in our community and not leave it for the next generation? And you can put in a plan where they get something in the project. So when I'm talking about fundraising, I'm not asking for twenty bucks. I'm saying like go after corporations and put packages together and make a full plan. And if you've read the staff reports, our staff is, doesn't have the time and capacity. But if we built it into a budget that we had a staff person that was built within that budget, like that's where my mind went, I don't know all, like that's off the top of my head on, not off the top of my head, I have thought about this quite a bit. But at some point, we're going to have to buckle down and pay off our debt. It can't be, like you can't, like, we're going to pay that water plant off in twenty forty two. And is it even going to be working in twenty forty two? So I don't, like that's, and then you have something to celebrate and work for. We haven't even announced to our community anything official about our ball field and they're already fundraising, people are already doing it, they want their community to succeed. So something like that, when I say fundraising, I would like to see us have a town hall meeting and it's more mapped out. And we ask the town first, are you willing to buy in? Like I don't want to hire a professional fundraiser and then we don't, it flops. But there's definitely, like I don't know all the avenues, that's why I asked uh, last year. Go ahead.
I think everything you're saying, Madam Mayor, is great and if, and I love the idea of a town hall meeting and open to the public and everybody participate because we are stewards of the people's money, that's what we were elected for. And also we can tie it in and if we can have graphs, because Melissa's already done such a wonderful job, just basically put that on. Basically, everybody can access this and see like, this is the ramifications, if we do this, 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 the Third Ave project. Third Ave project, we can say these are the consequences if we do this, option one, two and three, and get the feedback. Cause I got my own personal feelings on certain things, as does Counselor Stefani and Counselor Kissinger, you yourself, Mr. Schenman. And I think we all got different ideas and that, and at the end of the day, we've got to do what the people want and what they're willing to. It's, I don't want to borrow for my neighbor's future without their, without their input and their agreement. Like you said, everybody has to buy in.
Yeah.
And, and we can't make these decisions in a matter of like that, because I want to get things going. But at the end of the day, you make these too fast without all the information. We're just, we're tying ourselves down.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and I don't want to.
And there's, and we do have to come to a point though, I think as council, we should have a rolling ten year loan. What is it that we can afford so that we can buy things on, like that we know they're coming? Because some equipment's ten year and then twenty year and figure out what those percentage of loans are. And then that's, to me, that's, it's like having your mortgage payment. You have the asset, it's paying, you live in it and your mortgage is, you know, but you, you always have that, or a car payment, if you want to get it that way. But you have your, and you get it to a place, your car payment to a place that you can live with it. And then you always have that rolling. And you put money, and then that's where you can build reserves, because Melissa has said it and the treasurer, the other, the interim treasurer said it, like we have to be putting money into reserves. So it's this balancing act, how do you, like you definitely need some good debt. But then, but signing up to have the debt paid when the asset is right at the end of its life and you have no way to, like, that's why I'm saying, I don't mind going to a thirty year loan. If we have a plan where we can, where we're actively working to pay it off and then we pay the bill. And I don't even know if we can pay, like we have to wait to find out if we can pay it alone.
Yes.
So, sorry.
No, I did, I totally agree, it's just, I guess, I'm looking at it as, as business standpoint is, you're right. The difference between a mortgage on a house and a vehicle is the vehicle depreciates, the house will, if not stay, at least stay even, it'll appreciate over years. So we use that same principle of thought going forward with our rolling stock with the loan and, and thirty year investments. If it's, if we takes, if it takes thirty years, we haven't had it for thirty years and we gain thirty, forty percent of the value of it, then that's, that's an investment, you know? But I mean, other than that, like we don't want to be going down, going the other way. Because what's going to end up happening, I could see in twenty years from now, it won't concern us, but it'll concern our children and people that are going to follow us.
Yeah.
I want to see that you just, the snowball is going to just run everybody over.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the idea, so I know what you're talking about. Regarding the professional fundraiser, I think that needs a full discussion of council. I have some real strong thoughts of that, I work, I work city, I am with the city attendments. And most of them are very successful, and this is my previous background. That needs a full some discussion, positive, negative. And I think also if we had a open meeting for the citizens of this community, I think that's, we should get their input on that.
Yeah.
I agree, I appreciate your comments, yeah. Because what happens, if you have a professional person, just assume person A, we pay him by taxpayer dollars, we pay him or her. At same time, we're trying to fundraise in our community for the same people that are paying for that person's wages. He will, that person or she will go all over, I, I get it. But however, it's almost like double taxes, you're paying the wages that individual and then he's trying to obtain money, whatever, fifty fifty, whatever the amount to raise, whatever the, so I think it needs buying from the citizens of this community. It's a major, major decision.
Yeah, I would, I would clarify, just because you'd asked me, it was, you know, off the top of my head, really, I haven't written anything for council, I could do that, but I wouldn't, I would have the fulsome budget that included, like the fundraising would pay for that person's wage. The fundraising would pay the interest payments on our loan.
Right, right.
And then, so that you're, yeah.
I appreciate.
And then you have, and you have to actively go after corporations, you know? And if you can, like you think about it, if we could, you know, show the value of the investment, say for, I don't want to name the company, but one of our companies at twenty five thousand a year, that's a hundred thousand over the next four years, right? So, and I think the, why I said the hundredth anniversary is we can stretch it out to all sorts of different people and so many people have lived in our community and love our community. And when you look at it that for an investment of fifty dollars a month over four years, you, like we could possibly pay the whole one point two million, like that's pretty impressive.
You know, we get thirty, forty percent buy-in, it's, that's a good chunk towards it.
Yeah.
Huge.
Thank you.
I like to shoot for the stars, you know, and, and ask for more. I'd like, I'd love, I'll, I'm going to put it out there right into the atmosphere, I'd love to fundraise and have the whole reserve done too. So.
Long as it's not dark out at night, then we're okay.
Oh, that's okay, what is it, you shoot for the moon and you fall among the stars, Drago?
Okay. All good. All good. Thank you.
So for this, uh, so we'll wrap this discussion up on the first. And, um, is there any further information that council needs or that the treasurer needs? Yeah, go ahead.
So just to be clear, I'm getting information based on the life cycles of all of the assets. And I just want some to sort of bug in your ear about some of the assets, like the, I know we, or not, the fire department and the public court stuff. So say, um, for example, the life cycle for the fire truck is twenty years. So do you want me to explore options for twenty years or do you want to go for ten years? And then there's life cycles still left on the asset at the end of our use, then we can get money back. Or we're going for the whole life cycle.
Yeah. Sorry, I like the ten and twenty. Give it, give us an option.
Yeah.
I really, I really like that, Melissa. He didn't, he didn't just the decision to look at the, the entire package place. That's my take.
Is anyone need clarification?
I know it's more work, Melissa, just, but it'd be nice to have the options and we can also present the options when it comes time for a town hall meeting. Because it's, we've got a lot of investing to do here very shortly.
Yeah. So just to clarify, so we're all on the same page. So council wants the life cycles at the maximum. And then if they can, if you can, the fire truck, you'd like it at ten years too. If it has a twenty year, you'd like to see it at the ten year. Okay, so everything at a ten year, which we already have basically, but then it's mapped out by a year after that. And but we want the ten, like, the ten years we have to go. Like, if it has a life cycle of ten years, we can't get along for anything.
And then just clarification for my end, just to invite North Rock back to the main first meeting. And council will make a decision on which option at that time.
Yeah. I think we're pretty much, we're ready to make a decision. We'll just talk to them and get clarification. And then we'll measure the road. So any further questions or comments from council? Okay, there being none, um, we'll move on. You don't have any more questions, council? Okay, moving on to correspondence action items. Oh, it's, uh, Dave, the action on litter. Oh, oh, sorry, I gotta, but mover in a second or two for information. Moved by councillor Peter Kissinger, second by councillor Gregorston. Be it resolved that council does hereby receive reports numbered CSMTSR twenty twenty four dash zero one amended. Long term loans and SN, CSMTSR twenty twenty four dash zero two municipal funding programs as information most in favor. Nice carry. Uh, correspondence action room, we have, uh, the provincial day of action on litter. If I can get a mover in a second or please. Moved by councillor Glinda Kissinger, second by councillor Ted Shin, Shinman. Whereas nearly one ton of waste is generated per person every year in Ontario. It is estimated that almost ten thousand tons of plastic debris enter Ontario's lakes and rivers each year. And whereas the waste doesn't get recycled or go into landfills, ends up as litter in the environment, which has a negative effect on local ecosystems and wildlife. And whereas the province is working to reduce the amount of waste going to landfills and becoming litter by bringing awareness to the impacts of waste on the environment. And whereas the Ministry of the Environment, Confederation Parks has established a provincial day of action on litter to unite everyone across the province under the common cause of creating a greener, cleaner, and more sustainable environment for ourselves and for our future, future generation. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township, the Hornpain does hereby support Ontario's fifth annual provincial day of action on litter taking place on Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, you may, I'm, uh, this is close to my heart. When I worked municipality, I was in this about fifteen years of cleanup days. It was very, it wasn't difficult, it was simple. A letter went up for the municipal office, that was sent to all the schools early on and also daycare. And the citizens will be, we as a municipality provided garbage bags. Pretty simple. That's all we did. When the schools came back, said, yeah, we're interested, we had a map and we were assigned, say, Ombre Public School, Holy Name School, Third Avenue, or anywhere between two hundred to five hundred bags were collected in one day. The public worked and then you put it inside of the ditch, not on the roof. And that day, well, depends when they do it, or the next day, it's picked up by public works or reference department. It worked well. Anywhere between hundred fifty to five hundred bags was collected in one day. I think we should do that because it's minimum impact on staff. Letter goes out, people respond and say, okay, you're interested, uh, Holy Name School, what can you take over the demon, the demon and Third Avenue? They say, yeah, thank you, and they'll do it. I think, uh, instead of that's a resolution, let's have some action on it. Let, and I know at the public school, they're, uh, they're always talking about, um, cleanup and they're promoting that in school and in these classes between high school. So I think that the next step is very vital. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. As I, yeah, you want to speak?
Yeah, I can speak to that item. So staff actually did discuss doing something. Um, and, uh, wanted to propose having essentially the same thing that, uh, because it was brought up how you used to organize.
Yeah.
A township cleanup day, so we would have that, but we would probably officially name it the provincial day of action on litter. Um, and then it would just be, we'd organize staff, residents with a notice, uh, to everybody, including the schools, daycares, everything that you just mentioned. Um, and pretty much just pull together and clean up the garbage around town. Uh, we would provide the garbage bags, as you mentioned, uh, councillor Stephannick. And, uh, the bags could be left on the side of the road for the public works department to pick up. Um, and we're just in the midst of organizing it so we can have more information for council at the May first meeting.
And supplementary, uh, and the other thing is, I took ownership of the West End Road and Lyle Beatty. We cleaned from the end of the West End Road right to the top into, well, there was no CN facility there, right down. And people saw us and they came along and helped us. Worked really well. I think we were about ten bags just in West End. So if people buy into Third Avenue, uh, six thirty one, you know, and it, it sort of rolls, if you give it a real good hype, I think, you know, people get along. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I just have, sorry, one last thing to add that I forgot. And the staff would probably do just, just so we don't have to close the office down, we would probably do a few hours, like rotate and have a few hours in the morning. Some of us go out in the, some in the afternoon kind of thing.
That's great.
But we'll have information for council. And sorry, the treasurer has something to add as well.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, um, thought about it right now, but, uh, if we could maybe account, if council wanted to provide extra funding from our budget to, to this process, maybe we could, like, chase the water along with garbage bags. Like, you know, we put out the notice that we could pick up water at the town hall or even the public works or fire department or something, drop them off around, just water.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Three, is this, would this be a duplication of Earth Day? Because at Earth Day, are the schools not doing that, the garbage pickup anymore? Or is that something that this community has never done at Earth Day? Most communities do Earth Day as a garbage.
I'm not sure. We could do a quick call. Isn't it coming up on the twenty second?
Great. Historically, uh, not, more so in classroom, but Earth Day, because I was part of teaching that day, we did the cleanup around the entire parameter of the school. There, you know, the vicinity. So we will focus on that because the liability, that was the area that fears.
Thank you. Just think that's one thing that's probably changes the liability and the rules of what you're allowed to do with children, probably not allowed to have them off the site anymore. I don't know there'd be more, but it's definitely something to look into.
Oh, sorry, I did have one last thing to add. In regards to, so I just wanted to mention quickly as well that, uh, we have finalized the dates for, uh, take it or leave it, like, pretty much spring cleanup. And so the take it or leave it week is May twentieth to the twenty sixth. And the cleanup week is May twenty seventh to June second. And I know this will be put up for that as well.
Repeat it again.
Uh, May, May twentieth to the twenty sixth and then May twenty seventh to June's twenty, oh my gosh. May twenty seventh to June second. First week is take it or leave it week, second week is cleanup week.
Meaning outside of your property outside and just leave it there for a while?
It says, uh, so it's, the landfill is open regular hours that week, uh, leave reusable items, items at your curbside for others to take. Items left at the curbside after a certain date, and I, I'm not sure what the date is as of yet, but it will be removed during the, the second week. Is that correct?
Okay, any further discussion on that topic? Okay, there being none, I put the motion to a vote goes in favor. And that's carried. Do you want to eight point two? I think I really wanted to speak to this, so I'll just put it on the floor. If I can get a mover in a second or please, moved by councillor Peter Kissinger, second by councillor Ted Shinman. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the twenty two and three permits to take water report for the township to Hornpain is prepared by the Ontario Clean Water Agency Aqua.
Uh, for eight point two and eight point three, I just wanted to mention to council that once these are approved, they will go on or go on to the township website, um, as per usual, we put them up every year.
Okay, any discussion on eight point two? There being none, I put that to a vote, goes in favor, and that is carried. Eight point three, if I can get a mover in a second or please, moved by councillor Gregorston, second by councillor Ted Shinman. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the twenty twenty three performance report for the Hornpain Wainswater Treatment Plant as prepared by the Ontario Clean Water Agency Aqua. Any discussion on that report? There being none, I put it to a vote, goes in favor, and that's carried. Correspondence information only, if I can get a mover in a second or please, moved by councillor Peter Kissinger, second by councillor Ted Shinman. Be it resolved that council, corporation, township, Hornpain is here. The correspondence information only package attached to the agenda of the regular meeting council held on Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Any items that, uh, council would like to speak to in the information only package? I would just like to, uh, on behalf of councils, say congratulations, we got notice that the Hornpain Community Hospital has a appointment of a new CEO. And, uh, we do have a card for council to, um, sign. And for me, that was it. I didn't, you didn't have anything from that? Okay, if there's nothing else, I put that acknowledgement to vote goes in favor. And that is carried. Uh, item number ten is the committee and board, um, meeting minutes. If I need a mover in a second or please. Moved by councillor Ted Shinman, second by councillor Glinda Kissinger. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township, Hornpain does hereby acknowledge the committee and board meeting minutes attached to the agenda of the regular meeting council held on Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty four. And, uh, any comments on those minutes? Okay, there being none, I put them to a vote, goes in favor, and that is carried. Okay, we have, uh, item number ten point two is council committee updates. I just realized that we didn't do, we were gonna do the update for Manta and Minister Landra during the earlier one.
Okay.
One, we do that now, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Sorry, council, we just had, uh, had a discussion with Michael Matha and Minister Landra, and it had to do with funding envelopes, and we thought it would be discussed during, uh,
The long term, yeah.
Um, so I just wanted to, uh, just give council a brief verbal update and also have more details in my, um, April monthly report, which will be on the May first meeting. Um, but we, uh, discussed, um, just an overview of Hornpain's achievements in the last few years. Uh, such as the service delivery review and implementation and, um, projects funded by the, um, uh, by MMAH. Um, such as digital modernization and the comprehensive user fee and service charges review. Um, we also discussed, uh, new legislation in regards to the HAAs and, uh, the wa, the wastewater key coronation project and legislative requirements, which pretty much, uh, provide restrictions in regards to trying to meet those requirements for most, for a lot, many municipalities. Um, and then we briefly discussed the OPP detachment boards and how that puts an extra, uh, financial burden as well onto municipalities. And, uh, then I relate to Minister Landra and his team after, uh, the meeting, um, just the, uh, new, well, the regulations as of January first, twenty twenty, twenty twenty. Um, just the regulations in regards to the HAAs, uh, just because he wanted a refresher as he wasn't all too familiar with that. Um, and so I believe Mayor Fort and Minister Landra will probably speak about that again sometime in the near future.
Yeah, that's for sure, when I see him. Okay, I just wanted to.
And then, yes, and then we discussed, we had our meeting with Michael Matha on April third. Um, and, uh, discussed the, the, sorry, I'm just looking for the exact wording. It's pretty much the likes, I think it's span of the fire apparatus. Yes. Um, and just seeing if it can be extended. Um, and Mr. Matha did, uh, he had reached out to the Ontario Fire Marshal about this issue. Uh, but hadn't heard back from them at that time. Um, and he, Mr. Matha also, uh, mentioned that the level in training and intervention isn't as much as it is in big cities, which would, should be taken into context, especially in northern, um, northern Ontario and, um, other municipalities are also, uh, interested in having the same conversations just because they're struggling as well, um, in trying to, uh, purchase new, I guess it is, that fire apparatus. Sorry, I'm looking for the, why can I? Yeah, that fire apparatus. Um, um, and so he, uh, Mr. Matha and Mayor Fort will also, um, discuss this in the near future. Um, and he's hoping that, uh, a recreation, well, I believe there's a recreational fund envelope that was newly created that can be used towards recreational projects, um, as well.
Yeah, that's included in Melissa's report.
Yeah.
There's two, the fire one too is interesting. Thank you. Okay, uh, council committee updates, round table discussion. Councillor Ted Shinman.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. So with the hospital, we did, we spoke about the appointment of Linda Kozos via CEO. Um, and two of the unfolding things from that will be that, um, Linda will still stay on doing some HR work. Um, to be able to make sure that that still is that, and the financial will be, they're already working with Hurst. And so Hurst is gonna take on more of the financial, and then that will be something that'll just, um, grow into. So there'll be a combination right now where Linda will be wearing a couple of hats for the first little island, where they get Hurst taken over. Yes, um, and then at our CDAC meeting, um, we'll forthcoming out, but imagine that our next council meeting that I return to will give probably a good presentation of what our expectations and goals are for the hundred day anniversary and our other forecasts and what we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. At the meeting, was there any discussion about, um, branching out to a wider volunteer group for the hundredth anniversary?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I was approached on the weekend, there's people that want to volunteer. So, um, I, and that's what I said, I said, just wait, I'm sure it's forthcoming because I, well, Gregor and I both were part of the hundredth anniversary.
Seventy fifth.
Or the seventy fifth, I'm aging us now, but, uh, um, yeah, so it was quite a massive team, so. Just, okay, thank you, council. Councillor Kissinger.
I got nothing out of this morning.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kissinger, go ahead.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Gregorston.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a PhD meeting April twenty fifth. Library board meeting April twenty ninth. merger meeting for two boards, May in May and the CDAC meeting, May twenty second. Dr. Catton sent out dates and times for the update of the merger. There are three dates and three times, and if you have time, I would highly encourage to see it. It's becoming slightly controversial. And if you have time, I would highly encourage to see it. It's becoming slightly controversial, so I, I would suggest if you have time to look at it. I respectfully say that.
I already signed up for June seventeenth.
Excellent. And this is one, this is to the mayor. Remember I mentioned I'm taking Ontario Indigenous Cultural Safety Program Training?
Yeah.
O I C S P, I finally got notice yesterday. And it's by SAN, yes, S A N apostrophe Y A S, Indigenous Cultural Safety Training Program. I'll be starting April twenty-second, which is a Monday, the specific timeline, such you gotta meet. And the way to get part of this program, you have to belong to a board. You can't go individually, this might understand, I asked that question. So once I got, once I get my, my first session, I will get you to contact, you can whatever board you want to be part of, because you really did request that.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, and we actually, uh, at SAB, actually we got, um, the First Nations University of Canada. And I just did it on Saturday, it's Four Seasons of Reconciliation, and it was, uh, just superbly well done.
Right.
And, uh, yeah, it was ten modules and it was really well done. So all of our board is taking part of our next discussion, go back.
But rest assured, you will receive, and I could share with members of council as well, if they're interested, different boards they're on. Because usually, uh, the protocols that the board covers for that training, because everybody benefits, the board member as well as the board.
Yeah, I think it's something we should look at in the future, it's, uh, taking training, or, because there's, it's amazing, uh, what you learn. And just, um, the discrepancies that are in our history, and, um.
I'm looking forward to starting Monday.
Good, good.
And I'm looking forward also to be part of the Housing Corp Symposium, Symposium, May eleventh, at the Legion, uh, from nine to four. Thank you very much.
Good job. Okay, so, uh, thank you for the segue into the housing symposium, so it's, uh, often just being well embraced. I was on a meeting on the eighth of April for, uh, most of the presenters that are going to be there. In the meeting, we discussed about having a door prize, the next thing you know, we have barbecues and Yeti cups and come and, yeah, so it's, it's going to be quite the event. It's definitely, um, I've been encouraged, uh, encouraging the staff that, you know, it's a first event, this is like, um, it's always better, we're better than our first event, so we have, you know, we're gonna be better, because we've had no event, so. Um, but it's from nine to four on May eleventh, and, uh, we have, uh, two home companies coming in, uh, seed homes and one bowl. And, uh, I'm, I'm just excited about all the, like, all of the presenters are excited to do it, and they think that it'll probably domino and this will end up happening in other communities, so. And we are hoping to record most of the sessions, there is one presenter that can't be recorded, but we'll have some information online. And, uh, and then it'll be available on the Hornpain Housing Corporation website. On the website, you, it is a free event, but you do have to register, and you just go to hornpainhousingcorp.ca and register through there. And, uh, yeah, if there's any questions on that, I'm thankful. Um, so coming up, uh, this weekend is, uh, Good Roads, and, uh, I'm gonna be filling in for Belinda Kissmaker at Noma, and so it'll be a full week next week. I, uh, am hoping to meet with a few ministers one-on-one, I have been showing people, so that'll be good. And, uh, actually a few other people that we've worked with, I don't know if you remember Indra, who used to work for Aqua. He helped us quite a bit, so we're gonna have lunch on Monday, before we set that up. And, um, and then I have a couple of other meetings already set up with people for our theme, so that's good.
Um, they're quite.
Go ahead.
They're, uh, quite excited about this, normal one this year. It's actually quite interesting to hear the excitement, so I'll be bugging you guys when you come by.
Yeah, it's been quite the, it's been quite the adjusting of schedules. Because I was supposed to drive down, hit the admin meeting on Saturday, and then get to Toronto and then just drive home after, right? Well, I now I am, which is good, because we have a delegation for the Ontario Northland. So I'll be driving to White River, hopping on the Ontario Northland to Blind River. Then I'll be going with, uh, Mayor and CAO from there to Toronto, and then I'll fly to Thunder Bay on the Wednesday. And Eileen has graciously agreed to drive me home on the Friday. And, um, if we can come through White River, we'll pick up my car. If not, I might just get my dad to drop me off. So, anyway, but I thought after it was all said and done, I'm like, things work out through mysterious ways, because now I'm gonna be on that Ontario Northland, and that's our delegation for the Northeast Superior Bearers Group is in support of it. So I'll have pictures and, yeah, it'll work out great, but. Yeah, sure, the only thing I'm missing is a train. I should get off at the U P Express and take the train down into Toronto.
Good idea.
Train claims and all of them. Okay, any further comments with council committee updates? Okay, moving on to bylaws, lighting materials and service agreements, so if I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Dragoes, second by councillor Ted Chinman. Be resolved that bylaw number twenty-seventy being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a lighting material service agreement between the Corporation of Township, Hornpain and Product Care Association of Canada. Be hereby read a first and second time, but consider a third time and finally passed. And Eileen wanted to speak to this final.
Yes, so product care already, um, reinforces our municipality for paint pesticides and aerosols as they're collected at hazardous waste day. Um, so we already have an agreement with them, um, in place for that, and so this agreement is now just for product care to start taking, um, lighting. And, uh, we'll have that added as well. For the hazardous waste event, which is actually happening on Saturday, June twenty-second this year. So that's, that's just what this agreement is.
Okay, any questions on the bylaw? Hmm, go ahead.
I'd just like to say I'm so glad we're getting this, so. We, those long light bulbs, like, where I work, they've been moved to another, because nobody wants to throw them at me, so.
So we know we have, so we know we have waste already.
Oh, it's a bonus.
What's our bylaw?
Night. I don't care.
Well, if it's three bucks a bulb, is that the bylaw? I'll do a side deal, I'll buy them off you, too. Okay, putting that bylaw to a vote, those in favor? Okay, nothing for twelve, adjourned. If I can get a mover and a seconder for confirmation, please. Moved by councillor Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Ted Chinman. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty-seven-one being a bylaw held on Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Be hereby read a first and second time, but consider a third time and finally passed, those in favor, and that is carried. And adjourn, moved by councillor Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby adjourn this regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, April at seven thirty-seven P M, those in favor? I was scared, I almost said August, but.
Excuse me.